I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Noting a full attendance, thank you board members for being here this evening. We were properly noticed, thank you Kate. And our first up is continuation of our facility and potential referendum report with our long range facilities planning update.
Excellent. Charlie, EUA, I'm here tonight to report on the community information sessions. This should be reviewed for most of you. I think some of you or all of you were at community information sessions, but this is kind of a public sharing of that information. It's also posted on the website. We'll bust through this quickly. The, there were nine questions in total. There were two sessions, one on the 20th, one on the 29th. Between the two, there were about 68 respondents to our polling questions. Again, to be clear, this is, this is not our voice. This is, this is the community's feedback from the community. Again, 68 respondents posted on the website, let's get to it. So the first, the first question that we asked was, we presented the four different scenarios that have really risen to the, to the surface of our analysis. Scenario one, do nothing, four, maintain, renovate two existing buildings, create a single building campus by keeping one of the buildings and expanding. And then of course, scenario seven, building a brand new building. This slide shows the results of that information. The numbers to the right of the bar are the ranks. The top grouping of bars is the February 20th meeting and the bottom grouping is the February 29th. They ordered them in the exact same ranking, slightly different prioritization, but I want the same, same ranking. You can actually use your cursor on the webpage and find out the exact percentages if you wish. Poll question two. Poll the community at those sessions. If two buildings are retained and we wanted to renovate the educational spaces and update them, would you do so without approval theater in an indoor athletic facility? Or would you do it with a pool theater or theater in an indoor athletic facility? Here are the results from the February 28th, 20th, which by and large about, about 70% of the people were in favor of. Then on the 29th, you can see even, even more here, we have about 80%, so we're in favor of that. Of building, educating, renovating all the education spaces, updating them, and then also doing the pool, the theater and the indoor athletics facility. So poll question three was exploring the scenario to renovate and expand the south campus to create a single building. Or build a new building, what were the results of that? And it's, it's small on the screen here, but generally folks were 28 of the 43 respondents that night were in favor of both. Eight were only in favor of supporting a new, new building. Six did not have any interest in supporting any of these ideas. And, and one was, was the last one, the blue, the blue slipper. And again, here are the 25 respondents from February 29th. Slightly similar spread, just a smaller sample size. Poll question four. This information was asking the people that were giving the polls, how likely are you to support at the different levels of tax impact? On the, on the bars on the right, the red is very unlikely, if you can't read that, the dark blue is very likely to support. And you can just see graphically, generally the folks that were responding to the survey on the 20th were in support and were likely to, to pass or up front of, not, not to dismiss the red bars, certainly they're there. But the, from top to bottom, they're increasing in dollar value. This next slide is, is the, again, smaller sample size here of folks generally in favor of supporting. This next question, back to the February 20th group, again, 43 folks or so. They said, what, what would the, think about the Arrowhead community as a whole now answer the question if you were just a general community member, not yourself? And you can see the votes kind of swing to the left a little bit towards the unlikely direction. But still, on an average, you can see generally there is some support. You know, it's, it's a lot of gray there, as you can see across the spread. February 29th, again, smaller sample size, some more extreme data there. You could say, you could potentially argue that it means, means a little less likely to support. At the corresponding dollar values. So then poll six, this was more gathering data and information about those responding. This, this first question was simply, are you a resident? I, I did, I think it was pretty humorous that we had unsure, but fortunately, nobody answered unsure. And yeah, folks were, this is primarily a sample of people, of folks of the tax base here. Again, the top, the top, the top pie chart and the, from the bottom represent the February 20th and 29th respectively. This next question is, are you a parent or a guardian of a current AHS student? And there's a spread, blue is yes, orange is no. Second to last question here was, are you a parent or guardian of a student attending a theater school? Blue is yes, orange is no. The last question here. Are you an AHS staff member, orange is no, and the yes? And that's it. Again, all of this data is included on the webpage. It's been reported before, it should be reviewed, and thanks for having me.
Thank you. Any questions?
We should have got a question that said, did you take this poll at? Just I don't, I'm not sure.
Those poll results, when you go to the facilities planning page on the right hand, upper right hand corner.
Okay. I just want to check because I noticed some of our other colleagues from partner firms. Will there be anyone else weighing in for the, the update?
I don't think we, that was, that was the, that was it. Give a little update out of the survey.
If there's anything, I think, you know, relevant that, that the public hasn't heard already or that you want to add, that would be great.
So the survey, we're working with school perceptions. This is no news to most folks and they are very brilliant with crafting. I'm looking at you because I thought you had some good questions about how you. How you ask questions is very important. I'm not going to begin to pretend that I know exactly how school perceptions does their magic, but we're working with Bill Foster, Bill's an expert at crafting that, the data we get back, how you ask the questions. That's a continuous process between now and April, early April, which is really at the point where we want to finalize the survey. So that is happening, it's constantly on our minds. We talked about it at nauseam on Tuesday morning, we have another meeting on Friday morning to talk about it further. So that's exciting. And we're, we're really kind of working towards that survey, that everything, everything we do really funnels through that. And so DJS and EUA and our, our team is kind of going to go quiet while the survey is out because we're not, we're not doing advocacy work. We don't do advocacy. And we're not going to advance design solutions because really we're just, we just want to hear what the community has to say at that point. So things are naturally winding down a little bit for us and then we expect them to ramp up pretty quickly in June when we get the survey results.
I'll just make a comment too. If you were at those sessions or even if you were not, and you go up to the website and you look at those presentations, I'm curious what resonated, like what, we have to get those down to a 15, 10 to 15 minute bullet point list that we can quickly give an elevator speech on that information. So what pieces of those presentations resonated and need to be absolutely part of that 10 minute talk? And which pieces can be taken out? That feedback would be really helpful. If you were there or even if you weren't there and you go through those slides, what's important, what's, what's not? What you know already and what you don't know. Or what someone who hasn't been at the meetings, what do they need to know? So I think you can shoot us emails with any feedback on that.
Okay. So we will move on then to the superintendent's report and an update on Act 95.
I don't have a presentation, but I could come to the mic if that's easier, can you hear me okay?
I'm going to ask Sue to do mostly speaking on this, Act 95. We're not excited about this, we put it mildly. This is nothing we asked for, this is the classic solution for a problem. Legislators doing things, I'm sure there were good intentions, but the impact, just in the preliminary conversations that we've had, the impact is, I would say borderline nightmarish for us at this time.
Yeah, so I think the point was to, Conrad has already shared in the board briefing, the, what we understand in terms of what's in the legislation and now the job before us administratively is to come forward with some recommendations that will likely impact policy. We spoke with Neola today regarding policy with Act 95. So just for everybody's sake, Act 95 was passed in February, which gives guaranteed admissions to the top 5% of graduating classes to UW Madison and the top 10% to other universities of Wisconsin, formerly known as the UW system. So what that will cause us to do is have to change some policy we currently have in regard to grade, grade class rank mostly. Because the sole qualifier for guaranteed admission to those schools will be class rank. Apparently Arrowhead does not rank. As counselors and program leaders and teachers are looking at different aspects of what this will do operationally for us and in terms of policy, we will need to likely modify our grade point scale. And we're looking at ways in which we can do that. We're collaborating also with other Waukesha County school districts to understand what their grade scales look like as well. So probably recommendation coming forward regarding change to grade scale. The other piece that as soon as we start looking at grade scale calculation changes is to look at a weighting GPA. And what that means is certain classes in a four point scale, for example, would count for an additional point. And typically speaking, that would be classes like your AP classes, sometimes it might be honors classes. We'd have to determine that as part of recommendations for, for policy moving forward. And then there are other, many other operational things to consider when trying to determine not just rank, but the competitive nature of trying to determine in a class for 5% for UW Madison and 10% for the other universities. We need to be looking at alignment for grading procedures. We need to be looking at other procedures related to when a student receives a medical pass fail options that oftentimes we use in our grading procedures. When students repeat classes, what factor does that play in terms of right now? For, for example, summer school students can replace a grade for a semester with an R, with a grade they earn in summer school. What are the factors to consider when we're looking at that? Extra credit policies, retake policies, assessment policies related to teachers who allow, for example, a note card or partner quizzes. We, we now have a lot of discrepancies in our practices that we're going to need to likely look at differently. Late work policies and makeup policies, accommodations. We're concerned with the potential for increase in potentially academic dishonesty when there's so much at stake. Now, admissions, guaranteed admissions isn't the only way students are going to go to UW Madison. They're still going to have a regular admissions procedure and policy, but the guaranteed admissions piece for the top 5% to Madison is going to be a big deal. So we thought it was important to highlight some of the things that we're wrestling with and having conversations with because likely in the spring, those recommendations will come forward and ahead of that, as you, as the board is looking at different policy changes through Neola, we want to give the background to some of the nuances, the pieces that are involved in those policies. Gentlemen, others to, other pieces to add?
Yeah, there's a greater trickle down than just the top five and top 10%. We've, we've always, our students have always had the benefit of not having to report their class rank. And when you think about a student who may have a 3.9, 32 on their ACT and they're applying to Northwestern, well, when they've been able to not share their class rank, a 3.9 at Arrowhead might, might be the 11th percentile. We have such high quality kids who do extremely well in our system. And now reporting to a school that you're not in the top 10 percentile, even though you have a great ACT and a great GPA and all the other accolades outside of that. So there's, there's a, there's an effect that goes further down that we philosophically never believe that that ranking has helped our students and their opportunities outside of Arrowhead, so.
So the legislation, high school class rankings, the treatment first applies in the 24, 25 school year. So four, the treatment first applies to application admissions for 25, 26. So what that means is our current juniors will need to be able to know whether they qualify in the top 5 or top 10% ahead of, for Madison, early admissions, which begins August 1st. So it, it, it applies now for our current juniors who'll be applying for college or senior year next year.
Well, I have a question for you. Do we have an idea on the percentage of graduating seniors from like the last couple of years that have applied to Madison and wanted to get into Madison?
I can, yeah, I, well, I know, so this is a public meeting, but Madison doesn't always give us the greatest feedback in terms of a profile of the students who are admitted. And in fact, as counselors work with their particular students in their alphabet every year, there, there, there are discrepancies in terms of just looking at GPA or the courses that a student enrolled in, the things, the activities they were in. And you, you, you would see one particular senior student as being, gosh, really good chance of getting it, they don't get it. And another student who doesn't have the same academic achievements does get in. So it, it, it's, the profile for UW Madison has been tricky last several years. A lot of universities will give particular profiles that help us guide our students with a little bit more understanding of likelihood to be admitted. We, we know that through the senior survey, in terms of not necessarily how many applied and didn't get in, but we, that is always the top school for most of our students. Not necessarily for the students who would likely qualify for the top 5%. Many of them going on, not just to Madison, but other universities, out of state universities, for example. Another, another nuance, just to keep in mind, and I don't want to confuse anybody, but Arrowhead also, with a lot of schools across the state, joined a pilot program for what's called direct admissions. And what that meant, it was very similarly, students can skip. More information will be coming out to families on this piece, but students can skip the whole application process. They can be, we get permission from families to share right out of our student information system, direct to the universities, course, inform, uh, course achievement information, GPA and so forth. And they can, they don't even need to apply. In July, they'll get a letter from those universities that are participating, which does not include Madison, La Crosse or O'Clair. And they will just say, you're in. Direct admit admissions, you're in, you don't even need to apply. And there's a, a whole host of reasons for why those universities of Wisconsin have chosen to go that route. That's another, so they're essentially the traditional application route for our students, the direct admit route. And then there's obviously students who will get in through guaranteed admission. If we do have any national merit finalists, those students are direct admit. I'm sorry, guaranteed admits, see, excuse me. So, so it's complex. And what the, what the, what the legislation actually says is that we have to be able to report on it, we have to do class rank. And then we have to report on a transcript to juniors that they are, they are either in the 5% or top 10%. And so as we make recommendations for that language moving forward, I mean, it doesn't say you have to give the whole rank all the way down too. Just as on the transcript, you need to identify students who are within the top 5% and within the top 10%. So that's another, another factor to consider as we make recommendations forward. But Richard, today, we, he knows he's got an update coming from Neola too, so we'll be taking a look at their policies.
Are a lot of other high schools in the same situation?
Yeah. Yeah, so any, my colleague at Sussex Hamilton, they just passed policy over there to unweight grades within the last year. And so they are reversing course. So that's fun. But yes, as I've met with other Waukesha County colleagues, they're all, we're all trying to work together. I mean, Waukesha County is a high performance county in terms of students that were graduating from our high schools. And, and it's not to say Wisconsin as a whole doesn't produce tremendous accomplished high school students, but a student, certain parts of our state qualifying the top 5% might look different than a student here in southeastern Wisconsin. So as much regionally, we can be somewhat aligned to give our, sort of that, you know, a equal chance for, for again, guaranteed admissions. They're still being applied through regular admissions and likely many are going to get in to Madison. And I know that's the most competitive of the universities. So yes, lots of conversation at the curriculum and instruction regional meeting last week.
There's some conversations that are calling from, 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 there are a lot of candidates with corporate allowances.
So. So there's no tiebreaker in the legislation, but that would be part of our policy that we would be bringing forward for a recommendation to the board in terms of how to determine rank number one. Would those 22, 24, 33, 37, sometimes students with 4.0s all be ranked one? As soon as we go into a weighted system, that'll differentiate a bit than where it is now. And as soon as we might look at a little bit different, if we have a four point grading scale and we expand that to a 12 or 13 point grading scale, that'll differentiate it just a little bit more.
We're taking steps to create variance within that. So you get a five if you give an AP class, that creates variance. And then if you go to a 12 point scale, an A is weighted different than an A minus. And so you start to get through there, but ties still are somewhat likely to happen. And ties at that, right at that 10% cutoff and 10% cutoff.
I think our goal would be just, you know, in favor of student, student mental health, student, I mean, there, there's a lot to consider here for students that are very driven and that number will matter to them if they're in the top 5 or top 10%. So we want to be cautious in the policies that we bring forward.
So another question, many, many students don't go to a competitive system, but UW students, sorry. Is, is there any potential negative effects of this for students considering out of state or not chosen? We also have to protect from a policy standpoint, the negative implications of a 12 point scale or of anything weighting that makes them look less to potential difference.
One of the things to consider, and we talked about this with counselors, and counselors have a really good handle on those kind of questions. Typically, so I've been asked the question about weighted grades forever and, and a lot of families advocating for AP classes or, or those rigorous classes to, to have a weight. And what we've been told by colleges, universities all over the country is that it doesn't matter. Like we, if we, we look at, we need to look at all our applicants on the same kind of playing field. So if they come from a weighted system, but we're going to look at everybody unweighted, we're going to, we're unweight that GPA and, or vice versa. And so we have the capability of the league to be able to put a GPA in both weighted and unweighted on the transcript so that college admissions could see it both ways, which, which is a good thing. There have been, people have advocated and people in the community, parents who have advocated that there are other ways they believe when straight GPA is being taken into account. Other awards or honors that students may receive, they believe they've been penalized by not having the weighted, you know, to demonstrate what their GPA would look like in a weighted sense. So we're looking at all those pieces and trying to understand the full gamut of, of what that'll look like for individual students. Because again, I think we want to be really cautious about the, about the policies we recommend and bring forward. But the legislation is going to force us into rank and we just want to make sure we're doing the right thing for kids.
All right, the question is, I've just taken a look at our rank, 11% of the, well, there's probably delays of them getting accepted. Is there a deadline for those seniors to apply, so that rule of 5% coming to that, to divide the?
So, so the early admission for UW Madison is, is where the guaranteed admission piece occurs, but regular action, students will still be applying during regular action or even still getting in during early action. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it might cause the rate of acceptance.
Well, I, that's a good question. I guess we have to wait and see, I'm not sure.
Was it thought that far down the line? No.
No. Yeah.
Were ties thought about?
Oftentimes, you know, students are told a roundabout time in which regular action or early action decisions occur. And sometimes it can be weeks or months later. So my guess would be this is going to cause delay in decisions, but I don't know.
Yeah. So as the administration works to determine how this is going to look in real life, I would imagine this will be submitted off of families somewhere in the summer or fall.
I think we, timeline, there's a great question, timeline wise, we really need to be making some decisions here in the spring. And I think being, getting information to families before schools, schools out would be really important. Because those, those early actions, August 1st. And so I think we want to be, so be able to answer questions and people are still kind of connected to school yet for the end of school year before summer break.
We have, we have plans in place to, just for recognizing that some students might want to take an EP course, knowing that it might count for. So we've extended the windows, especially like in the fall where they can add EP course. And if they want to, we can, some of our spending will process for that.
And that was the second half of my question actually, because I would imagine that the, that created the AP course is going to go higher.
Yeah, we just.
It's already gone up and it might go higher, but it's built and broomed over more student adds, so we can absorb.
It's potentially, yes, depending on how the policy gets written.
And then one, one other kind of, maybe haven't thought this, this far into it. If there is going to be a rank, is it going to be a situation where we're going to get to a point where we're going to declare their valedictorian? Just a thought, I don't know.
Um, yeah. We'll have to wait and see. It's, I've attended graduations where there have been 12 valedictorians who all speak.
Anything else to say? So I guess what I hear you saying that is that you have a lot of internal analysis to do. But engagement with the board probably would be sometime this way.
So I think both, and through the board brief and other committees likely with updates and more rapid, that's going to come at us quickly. Because I think we need to have what that policy is going to look like in a communication plan to students.
Thank you, thank you very much. So we will move on then to the public comments portion of our meeting. And noting that we have just one speaker signed up, I'm wondering if we might forgo with the litany of rules that I usually read. But that's okay with everyone. And John, I think you've heard them many, many times, so you know where we're at. I welcome you up to the podium.
Thank you. It's selection time and I want to make some, make sure our board and our community are aware of the groups, the national groups, who seem to have taken an interest in our district and who seem to be quite good at reaching the, the, the orange portion of the pie chart with mailers, et cetera. Two candidates so far have been endorsed by the 1776 Project PAC, it's a national group funded by Dick U. Lyer and his Restoration PAC. funded by Dick U. Iron and his Restoration PAC. This is a billionaire focused on driving their agenda uh, that weakens public schools. And so this group is going to be sending out postcards and text messages on behalf of the candidates. Um, and none of that will be reported on any campaign finance statements. Turning Point USA is another dark money funded national group, uh, led by Charlie Kirk. And it's focused on installing Christian nationalism. Again, uh, one candidate, one board member have attended their rally in February in Merton. And these are just the non-partisan groups that have developed an interest in our school district. Unfortunately, uh, there's an association with, um, a partisan group that makes things worse. So we have board members and a candidate who received, um, and will be receiving support from the Republican Party of Waukesha County and Wisred. And this affiliation, as we've learned over time, uh, has increased the cost of campaigning. Um, and it does so with somebody else's money. Uh, so the Republican Party of Waukesha County spent almost $1,500 per candidate in this district, uh, in 2023 and spent close to another thousand, uh, per candidate, uh, in 2022. And it gets worse because this is a party that has an anti-public school platform and there's no interest. But this has been expressed to any, anybody I've met or myself. In fact, they've expressed quite the opposite in funding and fixing the funding formula or sufficiently increasing the revenue limit. It's a party with direct ties to anti-LGBTQ extremist groups. And, uh, there was a member of, uh, of, of one extremist group who was leading the group in prayer at the 2023 Lincoln Dinner, who, uh, is now charged with causing a bomb scare, a pride event. Uh, this is a party that's been found to be working behind the scenes to control who gets to run for local office. It's a party whose advice to candidates has resulted in at least one school board member in our area committing election fraud. Um, and it's a party that will only court and listen to, uh, its supporters. And like I said, they too will send out postcards and door monitors. You need to know, we need to know in our community what our district is getting into with these associations. And from where I'm standing, these associations seriously tarnish our reputation. Um, and so I call those who have not sought, um, and decided not to accept support from these groups. Thank you.
I wonder, John, um, if you're familiar with the group Blue Sky?
I am, yes.
Would you consider that a partisan group?
No.
No.
No, are they a political party? Are, I mean, when you vote for a candidate on a ballot, is there somebody who has in parentheses, Blue Sky?
When one votes for a political candidate.
That would, which would suggest.
And they have received any kind of, uh, support through the other groups that you have brought to light. You don't see, uh, uh, an R next to those names either, can you?
The word partisan, which I think a lot of people sometimes have a tough time with, refers to a political party. You'll notice when I speak about Turning Point, when I speak about, uh, Moms for Liberty, when I speak about 1776 Project PAC, these are non-partisans. They will reliably have somebody with an R next to them. But I'm trying to keep these concepts clean because I think it's very important to understand what has changed in our district. With the political party, Republican Party, there is no Blue Sky party, there is no, um, we the parents Arrowhead party. That's a non-partisan group. We now have candidates who've been backed by a political party and that's a shift and that's partisanship. That's, that's the distinction. And I know, I know it, I, I come across this frequently because you're not alone. Uh, but it's, it's, a lot of people are confused by that for some reason, but it's very clear.
I'm sorry. I, I don't know that I was particularly confused. I think I was confused by, uh, the manner in which you introduced the topic. You introduced the topic by, uh, speaking to 1776 and Turning Point and any number of others and kind of lumping them into the same gin. Uh, so if anything, I think perhaps the manner in which the topic was introduced was particularly confusing.
Yes. Uh, let me, let me clarify. I'm talking about national groups here. Uh, we could focus on smaller groups, local groups. These are national groups that are interested in who is running for, for a school board and who succeeds. These are national groups. This, these are billionaires, which is quite distinct from any other smaller group. Um, funding and supporting candidates to be on our school board.
And are, are you familiar with how 1776 is going about their endorsement process?
I, there's a, there's a, there's a question, um, but I, but I do know the mechanics. A, somebody, a candidate or somebody on their behalf has to apply that endorsement. And there's, and there's a series of questions.
Must, must they apply?
I, I gather that in order to get their endorsement, how else would they find out about the candidate?
Perhaps candidates are finding their names on some of those lists and they've never filled out a single, uh, line item on a form.
That's concerning. That's concerning. It's good for our candidates to understand who might be doing that on their behalf. Because it's quite possible that it may be one of the other groups that I've mentioned, Paul, right now.
And perhaps they have a really sound understanding of how that process looks.
Yes, is, my name's not on it though. So it's the, and this is not me to explain how my name got on there because it's not there.
No, no, it just happens to be all of us. So you bringing it to light as perhaps a very dark money group coming into.
No, 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 it's not perhaps. It is. It is. It is funded by Restoration PAC. It is funded by Dick U. Iron. If that, that is unconcussible.
What, what is funded?
Fund?
What is, what, what is funded? What dark money?
Well, first of all, it's called dark money for a reason because it's, it's hidden as to, you know, precisely where the transactions go. But we learned from the forums that this is from the U. Lines and it's from Restoration PAC and it goes to this PAC. Now, what, what this PAC is doing is sending out text messages on behalf of the candidate here. It will be sending out mailers on behalf of the candidate here. Um, and that's concerning because if you don't know how you got on that list, you've got some questions to answer.
Perhaps.
Oh, definitely. Both certainly. I mean, but you can ask, how did others get on that list?
Please.
So just, uh, to put it very clearly for my point, had you come to the podium and given a very sided partisan approach, because you always come up with something about partisanship, but it's always on one side. Had you come forward and did the same information you gave on the partisan side that is affiliated with the Republican Party in one way, but then also discounted and gave the same level of scrutiny to the ones of, of the Blue Sky that Mad President mentioned, because they're responding behind Blue Scott.
Who there is? I'm not here to talk about funding, Tim, though.
Yes, you were. You brought up funding. You brought up the funding of also one organization, but let me finish. So if you would have come up and talked about both sides and taken a, a complete global view of it, you would have had credibility. But the fact that you come up and only speak to one side, one source, the only partisanship thing that you're against, that you have now lost credibility to.
To challenge you on this, please tell me what other party is backing candidates in our district?
If, if a group like Blue Sky.
I just, I'm hoping you, there are two parties here. Well, maybe three, let's just.
The Blue Sky is funded by the Democratic Party, is it not? If you go through the funding source and look at who donates to Blue Sky or Act Blue, whatever that is, it is backed by the Democratic Party. And if it's not directly backed by them, it is now funded through another shell game of support. So you, you present the one side, but you leave the other out. Talk about both sides. I believe that partisanship should be out of the school. Absolutely. When you only talk about and complain about one side, all credibility is lost.
I tried to give you a chance to explain the partisanship. You backed Republican County.
Backed by Wisred.
Which is the same thing.
You didn't have to.
It's, it's, I'm afraid it's not. Um, they are exactly the.
With that same correlation, Blue Sky is the Democrat's.
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Tim, when you go to the Wisconsin Campaign Finance portal and you download the report for the Republican Party of Waukesha County, you can see this. With an, with a, with a, with a contribution, I think it was $951.73 in 2022. It'll then, for the other candidates, that is partisan backing. If you're going to tell me that you want non-partisan, you want partisan, partisanship out of school boards and out of school board latches, you need to talk to your colleagues.
It should be across the board.
It should be across the board.
But.
The Democratic Party is not backing any candidates.
You can just stick one side of it.
It's, this is a false equivalence.
No, no.
Uh, please tell me what, who is being backed by the Democratic Party?
I'll open up genuine at the board. We'll, we'll shut it down.
So John, before, uh, the first time that I had to run, uh, in, in the position of, like me, uh, and, and also the second time I've opened a practice, uh, the Democratic Party of Waukesha County each time sent me a mailer. Said, hey, let us know what your positions are. We would like to support you each time. And obviously I couldn't respond to that because I'm trying to stay up all, all the frame. However, they are, everybody is just as much a part of this as, as, as everyone else. Whether you accept it or deny it, whether you're.
That's, that's absolutely false.
This, this is, I, I have the letters. I, I.
No, no, sure you got letters. I'm talking about expenditure, door knockers, voter apps to guide door knockers, sign guys, social media posts, all from the Republican Party.
The, the other thing that I would add and talked about first read on my behalf. And, and even though I don't, I don't want to backtrack on something I said, because to me the listener is clear.
I'll listen.
I will, I would again take the support of Wisred. When there are members and people either in our community or on the outskirts of the community that will fight against certain candidates to run and go so far as, uh, buying a domain name that is very fitting for a, a candidate to use so that it makes it more hard for them to use. The support of groups like Wisred actually help those candidates when there are dark sources keeping them out of run. So with that, I think the community supports a group like Wisred, but I can also see a community supporting a group like Blue Sky for the exact same reasons. However, again, I'll stand back to the case of we want to be, and you want to be very credible source.
I, I don't, trust me.
I, I don't believe that, but you should take about and talk about both sides.
The, the, we don't have two equal sides here, I'm afraid. We don't, we don't. And I'll leave, I'll leave you with this because we can bring you too close. If we want, if we want to reach the group of voters out there for this referendum, and if we're going to accept the support of the Republican Party, who's very pretty getting dollars out, perhaps you can leverage that influence to support the referendum. They're very good at getting the message out.
If then largely the supporters of those same candidates are the ones that we need.
Sure you do, because the politicians from that party, Waukesha County, back to you, aren't supporting. And you have work to do.
They're supporting, I'm sorry.
They're not supporting the referendum.
Republican Party is not supporting.
They haven't supported referendums in this state, in this county. This would be a first. I would love it to see, to be a first. Representatives from our areas have not indicated that they're supportive of it. So it would be good to get them on side.
The legislators?
The Republican Party of Waukesha County.
Our Republican legislators are in fact the ones that completely steered us towards a referendum.
That's not what they're telling their, their lobbyists and I've heard it firsthand.
Everyone in this room, uh, was involved in interaction with our two legislators.
I hope they support, they support this. I hope they come out boldly in support of it. And I hope the Republican Party of Waukesha County does too. We need all hands on deck. But right now that partisan backing is causing division. And it's causing a loss of credibility in this board and a loss of trust in this board. No, it's, it's.
In your opinion, I think, I think we'll move on. Thank you so much for your comments, John.
Good luck.
Yes, every word. Thank. Uh, so we'll move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda this evening includes the February 14th, 2024 Regular School Board Meeting Minutes, the February Bill List, Accept Donations, Resignations, Retirements, Contracts and Letters of Appointment, as well as Approval of the 20, uh, 2024 through 26 Special Ed Consulting Services 66.03 Cooperative Agreement uh, that has some reference materials attached. Um, I urge any board member at this time to pull anything out of the consent agenda if you want specific discussion relative to that. If not, I would turn it over to, uh, to Craig, uh, for the donations portion.
Um, I have become accustomed, uh, as representative of the board and thanking the community who donates any, uh, resources and dollars to our school. And, um, we got that today. I will mention D and H Industries donating, uh, to Arrowhead Technology and Engineering. Uh, thank you all for that. Uh, if you can pass that on to the D and H Industries. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Um, I do have, uh, I would like to pull out the, um, Specialty Consulting Services Agreement and ask for a little additional information from Adam Bolt, uh, specifically, uh, on the second page. Uh, under C. Um, it mentions cost estimates for the 2024, 25, 25, 26 school years will be determined by January 1st, the school, um, year prior. And, uh, 23, 24 costs are estimated here. I'm wondering if you could provide a little extra detail there.
On the cost estimate?
Please.
Yep. Let me get our document. So cost estimates going into next year for the two categories that we use, which would be, we contract services with Elm Brook for a visually impaired teacher and a deaf or hard of hearing teacher. Those are two, uh, very low incidence populations that we need those for. So, uh, what the districts that are listed on the, the first page and us do is Elm Brook hires the teacher or teachers. And then on an hourly basis, depending on what is in the student's IEP, we, uh, contract with them for, and then we pay them for that. Cost estimate for hour next year for visually, visually impaired teacher is 162.70 an hour. For deaf and hard of hearing, uh, 141.54 cents an hour.
And is that roughly the same, uh, rate that it's been in the past, Adam?
Yeah, the Elm Brook will raise with, so the teachers are on their pay scale. So we're beholden to the Elm Brook pay scale, tend to go up just like other Waukesha County districts with CPI. Um, and then whatever some of their incentives are, uh, positions tend to change over a bit, uh, with, uh, some of those. So deaf and hard of hearing change mid-year, uh, for us, vision can sometimes stabilize. We get a long-term person who tends to live close to Arrowhead. It's kind of nice. Um, but they're typically, people in, but cost wise, I don't think Jeff, that's that is like substantially higher. It's probably within their, what they're looking at for a senior guy.
Okay. Thank you. Good to know.
Just to clarify, so legally, technically correct, the agreement is a 66.0301 agreement, not 03. 03 is the law that is the adjustment of assets and liabilities on the vision of territory. Nothing to do with the, I just don't want anything to, or get messed up because of a technicality like that. We need to make sure we're properly according to all of these segments.
Okay. Uh, thank you.
Yep.
For clarification. Thank you.
Definitely don't want to hire our own.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion for, uh, the entire consent agenda.
You can make a motion with regards to defining that number.
Thanks, Kay. Thank you very much. So we have a motion, uh, to approve the entire consent agenda as listed and further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. First up on our committee reports for this evening is Chairperson Hammer with Curriculum. First up on our committee reports for this evening is Chairperson Hammer with Curriculum.
We had a meeting on February twenty-second of the Torrey County Committee. It was very lightly attended. We had a group of world language teachers come in and present. Prior to that, just revival from the chat on travel and death book. Review on proposed trips and alarms. And I do see that that's mentioned here as a discussion and action item, but not listed as such. So would we do that in that meeting?
Yeah, we have to approve. The board has to fully approve.
Right, so I was thinking in the agenda has to be listed out as an action item. You can do that on people. But the world language department, the trip looked really nice from New Orleans, kind of very interesting. The world language department gave a test month presentation, Chinese, French, German, Spanish languages, probably two structures for what program. They talked about building proficiency in speaking, listening, reading, writing, communicative practices, cultural acceleration. It was very nice to happen there. After that, Sue presented material collections and asked for input from the committee. Given that a lot of board members weren't in attendance, we're going to go into that deeper right now and sue great to.
Sure. Sure. So do we still have that? Did you guys turn it on? Oh, son of a gun. Did you? That's okay. That's okay. We'll have the discussion. If we need the visual, I'll pull it up. So at the committee, I outlined what, and I think this conversation was started as part of policy conversation. So at curriculum, I just reviewed with the committee what our current selection materials policy kind of indicates. And so basically, our current policy indicates that superintendent or his or her designated shall select instructional materials for the classroom and media centers in order to meet the goals of the education program at our high school. Superintendent shall set in place appropriate procedures for evaluating and selecting such instructional materials subject to final approval by the board. The responsibility for the selection generally falls on the teachers of that particular course that's looking at a textbook or selection of materials, whatever it might be. And usually when it's a textbook, we review those about every eight years and then bring them forward as part of the budget process. So it's always been linked to budget time and what is in the budget for supplemental materials. And then that's how kind of the decision gets made. We talked about a little bit in terms of what the selection committees look at in terms of criteria for selecting textbooks and those kind of bigger materials that might be utilized for a large portion of any class. So a textbook selection committee, which again is usually going to be made up of teachers and a program lead. I'm involved usually in, as part of the selection process. We look at addressing, so does this text or major resource address student learning outcomes for the course? Does it adhere to the curriculum? We look at readability and visual aids and other supporting materials. We look at the reading level or levels of a particular text. Current up-to-date information, again aligned to standards, the accuracy of the content cost. And then those other supplemental materials, which oftentimes includes online capabilities to interact with like a canvas platform and those kind of technology pieces. They'll take a look at multiple publishers. Usually we recommend that as teachers are reviewing textbook or those larger either online materials that they're looking at publishers, three or more publishers to see a wide range of of materials that exist. When a selection's being made, they have to identify as part of the budgetary process, a rationale for why they made that selection. What course or course says, because sometimes it might be multiple levels of a course that's going to adopt a text. What is the cost? And then any additional information that the committee consider. Those get filed with me and then they get attached to the budget requests that come forward as part of the supplemental budget process. So again, I outlined for the curriculum committee, that's been our process, recognizing that I've heard in policy discussion that there would like to be a little bit more concrete information presented to the board regarding those selection materials. So we just opened that up and could continue to open that up as part of the curriculum committee ahead of a policy discussion in terms of what do you want that, what would that look like for us? Who want to solidify that process with a little bit more definitive answer regarding a change in textbook or major selection? I understand that.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I think that it was, it was a little light of the name on which we discussed a little bit about how a normal course of action is that the board improves textbooks every five years, brings it basically to the bill list. As the textbooks kind of within them. So you know, basically our board has not seen that ever when I pulled. So I, I agree with that. I think that that's, that's a good course of action that we've seen. But what the teachers and administration have decided upon, basically that. I'm just wondering if moving forward, if there is a way to have in a part of curriculum, something where you can review books that are already in process of being classes. If that's, that could be a part of, I know that you have the teachers coming in for presentations, which is fantastic. I'm wondering if the tech.
You, so as part of the depart, ongoing perhaps department updates, we'd have a selection of texts which we could easily provide. And then you'd see what's currently in the hands of our students. And then when there's updates, we'd be articulating that every time something's coming forward, we'd bring this rationale forward as part of curriculum committee approval and action? Or would we be looking at just simply FYI?
I would personally.
I think it's been more FYI than I asked, because you know what? I was looking at the policies because you know, the board really just mentioned through most of it, the selection or anything like that. The one thing that I found was the final say on the textbook subject of final approval by the board. But we don't really see the nitty-gritty, you know, we just kind of get a report of what we learned going forward. And that hasn't happened often. Like you said, it was eight years. You know, I think that's a good idea, just from having our presentations with the committee. Just get a list of textbooks or, you know, just kind of a heads up so we can be what it's. Not that we all have the time to go through everything, but.
But I actually have a few at meetings, so we can look at that. Have a few that we can check out. Since we are the arbiter of final
Keeping in mind, in some cases too, that the in math, for example, a lot of the major materials that are being utilized are not texts, even though students might get a text checked out to them. A lot of times it would be teacher curated materials.
Well, and that's why we have the ability to review campus. So if you know, we had any questions or any thoughts or just wanted.
And do textbooks include specifically novels?
Maybe if we could get a list ahead of time and as we just ask, okay, I'd like to see this one or that one, not maybe every one of them, just like. Have a cursory scan or go through.
I can give you the entire spreadsheet. I mean, that's not a big deal.
Curious about what we're saying.
Sure.
I'd like to just kind of make a useful course of action. So forward, any other thoughts? Agree with what we're sending this change here? Disagreements? Ms. Ravers?
I, I think it's legitimate to, since we are the authority to approve these, that sort of materials we use. Budget, support function is important as we have the authority, we know it's not secure. Be aware. That being said, I think it's a very slippery slope to dip into this because we are not curriculum experts. And we have an administration in a pod. It's helping to have a good interchange of views and thoughts and discussion. About this help, but it's a slippery slope to go down, to think that you know better than these folks here, probably. Should or should not be included or driven from how this is selected and so forth. Again, the order goes with responsibility, but let's keep.
I guess I. I guess I have to say, many chairs get some discretion and decide on it. Reading textbooks is like a, you know, this kind of, I gotta go ahead. I would hope that it doesn't come to the whole board for what that is. It's possible for everything that's written in it is textbook that, you know, is here. I have those textbooks. They're in a lot of the. Some of the textbooks that are prepared. Yeah, I agree.
I, I just want to clarify, we were saying two things. One was more FYI. Here are the, the books that are in hands. Here's a change that might be made. Here's what the change would be. But I'm also hearing. I don't think so. The way we're talking about it right now, I don't believe it would be a policy change, other than that we would be reviewing every five years, you know, have a five-year rotation. That would be, that would change.
Final approval by the board. So it's kind of nice to know what we're approving.
Sure.
Now it just has that ability to read through or to slightly scan or to see, okay, what we're off.
So, so with a change, we would bring that book forward, that rationale forward, the department forward at committee level, and then it would come forward for approval by the board. Sure. And we'll, we'll develop a rotation for that then.
And it would be nice to have, but perhaps like for instance, if, you know, like two months from now, we're reviewing the bunch of boards, say, okay, here's a textbook, whoever would like to check them out, you know. Check them out, you know, so we're not just right there at the committee, you know, diving through things. So just so we have an awareness.
I think, right.
I, I, I don't want to do that.
Math is exciting.
And I'm just not, I'm not sneaking. And I'm also, I just wanted to make a just, I, I know, Craig, I don't think in the bottom thirty, I'll speak for myself. I don't think I'm trying to say that I know a great report. But I do think that the first part of the statement is important. We have this possibility that we think our, who knows how long it would be. So I think it's, and I'm.
Understand, no.
May I just ask for a.
Sure.
I thought the discussion part of it was that this would be something that would be built into as deeply related as the many, what a life that we're living. It wasn't anything that. Any problems. And Craig, do you.
Well, I was thinking that, you know, a review comes up and eight years or five years.
I think we have to five, yeah.
Something that we would have to approve.
Right. I think we're saying.
Right, yeah, that's what I. Right. And now we would just. Yeah, I think your point earlier is a good one. That is the purview of the committee chair.
Yeah, so I think we develop, I'll bring something forward to the curriculum committee in terms of a plan. We'll develop that rotation in terms of what texts would come forward when. And then I think just, I am imagining the fact that, like we said with world language texts, for example, that was like a two-year process of reviewing several texts. So it's an FYI. We're reviewing texts. This is what's coming forward. This is what they currently use. This is what they're reviewing. And then when they do bring forward their recommendation, that would come forward to the curriculum committee, it sounds like. As this was our selection, not necessarily for the board to reverse course necessarily on. You certainly ask questions, certainly clarify, certainly you know, understand the reason behind the teacher's selections. And then I guess I need clarification then. Once that's discussed, would there be a final approval by the full board for that new, new material? Okay.
Like when. Well, eventually when new, the, the board gets the final approval on the textbook thing. As it has in the cap, it's kind of been a blanket approval where we really don't know the majority. And this would give the curriculum committee a little opportunity to at least look at what are we approving? And then we bring it to the board for approval. Everything's been discussed at the committee level. And the board is both.
And mass.
I think it's, I think if I might make a suggestion, going forward. So we'll start, we'll, we'll give like a list. I don't know that that current list would require any additional approval. But from this point forward, we'd have a rotation in which if anything was going to change from that list, that would come forward to the board. That's what I'm hearing.
It's my understanding that many of our books are.
Oh, more.
Many of us on the board currently that.
Yes.
Cheers when some of these books are.
Sure.
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah, sometimes when the review process occurs, they take a look at what, what's out there and they said, we're going to stick with the same, same old.
So maybe I'm, I'm trying to understand what Simms and Peter is. Are we going to be in the process of approving textbooks at this board forward level? What kind of textbook is going to be used? A big food products. What's going to be used in ancient biology? What's going to be used in French? What's going to be used? Are we going to do every one of those books as they come up at this?
No, I just think it's been the Michael.
By the board, because by the board, I mean, I probably have to do everyone. I understand.
If I, if I can put this into context, maybe if I see this correctly, instead of it, for instance, coming through our bill list, where all of a sudden we've bought a bunch of brand new history books and all we do is approve the bill for those purchased, this will bring it into the realm of curriculum. So curriculum will have an opportunity to see the book, understand it, and then it may be done and, and then, and then it will come to the board on the bill list. I mean, that's, yes.
That's what I wasn't understanding.
Is, is that, yes, I mean, just to put it into context, I think that's. It's just that right now, we see things on a bill list and we've never felt it or we've never read it. So knowledge of it.
I, I understand both sides of this. I understand the the kind of easygoing approach that is being given. But I also, and that's but I certainly don't want to be a single, uh, accusing each one.
I don't think.
Way beyond what we have.
I think at the end of the day, that probably would require a change of policy. We have structured our selection of this course policy. It had, it would require a change to that. And I don't think, at least that's an impression I have in the, you know, the discussion that's passing attention, I'll change the policy. It really means that, you know, with the already five-year cycle of people purchase for a department, it would be nice for the board to understand the lead books that that department is reviewing.
I would, I would just suggest at an upcoming curriculum committee meeting, I'll, I'll present maybe a a rough plan for what that, what that could look like. And then, and then. And then, and then if that's the desire of the board, we could still bring it back for further discussion in another board meeting.
That sounds great.
Thank you.
Anything else on that topic? I do notice that we have our next meeting April 3rd and we were going to talk about AI and director's report, but we moved that. The topic will be on mental health. We figured that will take an entire, starting at 6:45 and ending at 8:00 class on April 3rd. So I encourage everyone to try to make it to that because I think it would be really interesting. Adam Foltz is going to be presenting along with some others.
Yeah, a group of colleagues like Derek.
I think that's a very important topic and thank you for doing that and setting it up. Then we're going to have our next meeting also in April because we didn't have one in March at all. But that will be, our next meeting will be April 25th and then we will do the audit and the presentation as a director.
That's a question we will be able to. I'm like 36 seconds to go. To get an update on the draft. 95 stuff is all.
Yeah, yes, sir.
I just wanted to say, I've got a little bit of a dive into the health portion of campus. There seems to be a lot of really real good mental health pieces to the education that happens here, just from what I've seen in that area. So it's a couple of health.
Yeah, the health teachers take a lot of that responsibility and education should go to them. And that was just in an event at WCTC before I came here and somebody from NAMI reached out and just said, Julian Marazo has been terrific to work with and she's bringing us in on Friday to work with the kids. So yeah, they do a great job.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have a question. You said that the next meeting would be on the 25th of April, not the 18th?
Yeah, we.
I'm on a tone.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Just today, you got it, but we just finished the third. Still the third, we're going to do two meetings in April.
And then instead of the third Thursday, it's now the fourth. Wait until April, because we didn't have one in March.
Oh, yeah.
So April 3rd is the day after the election, which I'm working the polls on meeting very tight. But I'll be, and then April 25th for the AI and the current administration in 25.
We're humming right along with it, so I think that what that April date is probably a target for trying to.
Update, it'll be maybe an update, I imagine on the 25th and then probably a May policy meeting potentially. Mm hmm. And then a board vote, yeah, either in May or June.
Okay. Well, thank you, Chairperson Heiner. Moving on to finance and legislation with our co-chairs Evers and Vokelts.
Sure, so our meeting was held since like 21, February 16th. Good attendance, majority of the meeting was focused with guests. And that's Shippit, who was essentially our auditor across everything from the school finance portion for the 2022, 2023 financial records and without repeating everything that you've used with us within the minutes that it goes by section by section, as well as if there is an actual audit report available, but anyone is interested to share that those are detailed. But potentially overall, for that finally, really, really positive, so I took it as a positive outcome. And then really just goes to attesting to Mr. Gross that he's attention to his teams, to tell them the process of being very sound, clean and auditable records for school finals. And so it throws some very hats off those that have ever experienced an audit or isn't part of your previous task to be audited. Everyone likes audits. Anything I missed for Jeff to share?
Yeah, we had a good audit, yeah. And our audit was extremely thorough, so they checked everything that I do at home and we're always very fun.
And the auditor really enjoys auditing.
Jeff enjoys being audited.
And then for the second half or second kind of 25% of the meeting, Mr. Gross showed kind of his modeling and build out of tax impact scenarios that led into the workshops that were scheduled later in the month as well as in the March, so that we kind of just culminated into the fourth meeting. So interesting what you shared here with the 20th and 22nd meeting. And then also additional planning and building work leading up to the workshops for March 7th. Also April 4th. So the dislocation of that's kind of a bit of overlap between buildings and ground. They're kind of now interconnected, referendum planning piece, so that will have that. That really closed out that meeting and the next meeting, we have to call agenda that we sent out tonight. Will be this Friday, March 14th.
Thank you, Baron Evers. Chairperson Benneker, building a ground, anything to?
No, it's pretty much been people.
It all runs together at some point, doesn't it? Okay, Chairperson Lang, personnel?
Personnel. We've got a couple of reps of the board with the committee board that came up. A letter earlier this week, so. Agenda, next one.
Thank you. And last but not least, Chairperson Paris with policy.
Okay, we have a meeting on March 6th and again, it's pretty lightly intended. I know that all of us, you know, life happens and we're all really busy. However, this is a commitment that we're trying to stay ahead of to have all the policies for NEOLA completed for summer, if possible. So we're going to have to do some deep dives and what I really recommend for each board member is to take a look at the upcoming numbers. And I'm just as much as fault as all of these, as anyone else, because I'm a little bit, as far as. Following the rules right, just in the last few months, it's been a little bit hectic in my life. But if you could go through some of the upcoming sections, add your questions early so that Conrad and Richards can take a look at what they've done. That form, that will really help expedite things as we continue forward. So at our meeting on the 6th, we discussed 9130, I'm not sure if, and that's one with public request, suggestions or complaints. I felt like we had wrapped that up, but I don't see it as a discussion in action tonight, Colin, that's something that we're still in the midst of, or is that? Where does that stand? Which number I guess, 9130, that was the first item that we discussed after meeting.
Or shall we just wait for the 9,000 series?
Yeah, we're trying to move the series in at all of us, guys. Okay, so then the next one, we really, we got all the zeros. So we have an item tonight to have that discussion and it's preliminary approval, this one. Action for the zeros at the part of the next fiscal year, so we can have that out of the way and then continue forward. The next meeting is April 2nd and so then I'll turn it back over.
Thank you, Chairperson Paris. So we are pleased to have worked through the series 0000, which does not imply there's nothing there. It's chock full of goodness. But I am looking for the following motion. I'm looking for a motion for preliminary approval of the NEOLA bylaw series 0000 as part of the overall adoption of NEOLA policies for the 24 and 25 this year.
What does that mean exactly?
I have a question.
In essence, it means that we're going to approve it tonight and set it aside as our target date is July, correct? To have all of the NEOLA policy or perhaps end of June.
Usually the June board meeting.
June board meeting.
Everything, so it goes back to July.
Yes, we're just kind of checking the list at this point, we're checking the box. But so it's. That is correct. They will convert completely as full series of NEOLA policies at the June meeting. It is a very different terminology than we're used to using.
Billy Richard's recommendation, just this process, I don't think we have to do it this way. But it's, I get his logic of taking, getting them kind of all done preliminarily so that in June, for the year to go. And it also helps steer the images. Let's try to go back and revisit the knots.
Yes.
Over 20, this is not the policy.
That is correct, yes.
Does we have in July, we'll have to go back and approve the entire scope of policies, you know, just to aligns for, is this preliminary trying to approve in July?
In June, we'll have them all approved for official adoption. Drop the preliminary and then the June motion will be to adopt all NEOLA policies back to July.
Any other questions? So I am looking for a motion. Fair enough. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, our next meeting is April 2nd and so for those of us that are going to be at the polls that day, it's April 2nd, April 3rd, because your sleep last April 1st.
And one quick question next to me. Chairperson Paris, was your ask for us to go in and start to draft ahead of that?
Yeah, if we go into and yeah, before the next meeting, yeah, please go into the one, if you're going to one. And then the two, I believe, right, we're going to move, try to move into all of Conrad, next. I'll have to make sure to talk about.
Okay, I already got into that, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's the. First step, like clean environment.
Yeah, they go into.
Thousands, 3,000 to 9,000. 2,000, is the, I think we got the zeros, 2,000. All right, go to the book, it's a policy manual, first draft, at the top of that, there's a triangle choice. For which you put here, if you mind, says pamphlets. For the one on NEOLA for draft, for the thousands, 3,000 to 9,000, go already to the board.
I believe on a schedule for April 2nd, it says the 3,000.
3,000.
And that is on the sheet that you all have access to, that sheet that contains where you can put your questions.
Yeah.
There is a calendar slash timeline and we will continue to update that as we, if we can't get through something, we just refresh that. So you can always look there to see what you should move on that.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, Chairperson Paris, thank you very much. Moving on to the WASP, I have no report there, Mr. Benneker, anything else to say? New business. Okay. We're getting through this crazy fast. Future agenda items.
There's a possibility of us having another update on cell phones and how, I know that there are, like one campus is doing better than the other campus.
We don't like to compare campuses, that makes me angry.
I'm not saying which one, I'm just saying that, you know, what's more compliance seems like, so how that's coming along.
Can do. We had one school that. Ooh, there it goes, there it goes.
Along with future agenda items, kind of going back to Act 95, I'm just trying to take advantage of how to be drawn for community members to be seated. I wonder if it'd be a good opportunity for a Act 95 update in terms of what does it mean to students and parents? But also tied appropriately with referendum type discussion, how the two are connected, they're not connected, that's not the point I'm trying to make. But to try to just get more people at the seats to your folks. Who did it come for one reason or another potentially, but walk away with other information. But if there's a way to combine, not not combine, but to have both on the agenda. Draw as quick a crowd as possible to. Really just articulating out what is the right time for the agenda, for them to both be on? And what is the right topic from a representative, for us appropriate.
I don't know if they're going to, I don't know if they're going to overlap that way. We're going to want to, the education around the surveys.
That'll be.
Right, because that goes out.
On the end of April, so that's not going to be, I don't know, we have to discuss that.
Let's try, I hear what you're saying, let's see if we can figure out some package. Maybe that, those two, but let's.
Can we package up that ice cream too?
Ice cream sauce, I'll see.
Anything else for future agenda items?
The next work session?
April 4th?
April 4th. The final plan, I think that's the desire we do final ones that, if possible, finalists, maybe that might be outstanding. Probably would, I probably can.
No, no, that was.
We can use that work session to do the finalizing, it won't come to the whole board. For that, but totally, we don't really have the workshop to.
I think Phil Foster mentioned April 4th at one of the workshops.
Share.
I found it's the same time, yeah, we hijacked the BNT meeting from the morning and moved it to the evening, 6:00.
Okay. So at this point, we are going to look to move into close pursuant to state statute 19.851(c) and (f). The board will move into closed session and later into hold them. So if I can have a motion to move into close. And a local vote, starting with Mr. Evers. Thank you, everyone.